In partnership with parents and the community, Birmingham Public Schools will provide an educational excellence that empowers students to cultivate their individual brilliance and positively impact the world.
This is Tuesday, January 6, 2025, and this is the Birmingham School District Board of Education meeting. Our first order of business is roll call. Tracy?
Trustee Ajaluni?
Present.
Trustee Hope Comer?
Here.
Trustee Joseph?
Here.
Trustee McKinney? Trustee Rass?
Here.
Actually, I won't do that. Trustee Spencer?
Here.
Trustee Zama?
Here.
Trustee Tajani?
Here.
I want to welcome Trustee Tajani to our meeting tonight and thank former trustee Nicole McKinney for her service. I know we'll formally recognize her later this month. And now, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Roberson for tonight's recognitions and her superintendent report.
January is Board Appreciation Month, and so I first want to welcome our new trustee, Jason Tajani. Welcome to this first meeting. And I also want to thank the entire board. On your desk, there are a few gifts. And before I explain them all, the first one that I want to share is that you all have charcuterie boards on your desk from Chartwell's. I want to bring up Patty Guck and Holly Fields, and they are going to tell you a little bit about the Chartwell's program, the charcuterie board, and also the partnership that we have now with our students at the Adult Transition Program.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Patty Guck. I'm the Director of Dining for Chartwell's for Birmingham Schools, and this is Holly.
Hi, I'm Holly Fields. I'm the Assistant Director and Dietitian for the district.
So your charcuterie boards, you guys all know, are our yearly tradition that you all love, and they all have your dietary requirements, so we take care of everybody. And then, we also have our young adult transition student, Pia Branchstrom, with us today. And Pia is going to come up here with us. She's been working over at Sea Home along with four other students from the BATP. Hi, Pia. Pia actually has gone through all of Birmingham with us, and Holly and I have watched her grow up. She went to Bingham Farms, and then she went to Derby, and then Sea Home, and now she's over at the BATP. And she loves working in the kitchens because she loved her hot lunch, and now she gets to help make the lunches for her student friends over at Sea Home. So we have a presentation that we put together real quick just to highlight and tell you everything that we've started recently. So in partnership with the BPS Adult Transition Program, we have created a new work experience now for students, our young adult learners over at the BATP. And our goal is to collaborate with the teachers and the students to provide educational opportunities to teach them life skills in the kitchen, social skills, living skills, communication skills, to have better opportunities within our community in their future.
And so our goal is to have a positive and fun workspace for our young adult learners. We work on building a positive relationship within our Chartwell's team. They're actually a part of the team working to feed our students there. There is food prep, and that's including cutting and cooking. They're working on cleaning and sanitation. They're working on organization skills, communication skills, and personal hygiene.
Our adult young learners actually went through a lot of required training to be able to work inside our Sea Home kitchen. So they went through basic food safety training that we conduct every year from Oakland County. We also did our Chartwell's Dining Workplace Safety Training. We did hazard communication training. We did knife safety training, and I also conducted the USDA Civil Rights Training with all of our BATP young learners.
Was it a lot of training, Pia?
It probably wasn't their favorite time of the day, but we got through it. We got through it.
We're all about safety. So our young adult learners, their daily job duties, so it includes, but not limited to, stocking beverage coolers and snack racks, our basic meal prep such as making smoothies, our yogurt parfaits, salads, sandwiches. You can see Pia making some of our sandwiches there on the left-hand side, baking and wrapping our homemade baked goods, washing our produce, cleaning duties, and washing dishes.
Just one of our meals, our hummus platter that some of our students make on a daily basis for our Sea Home students. And yes, we do have nice labels with that, so the students know what they're getting. And it also does have all of the nutritional information on all of our on-the-go lunches for the students. Also, our young adult learners are fostering a positive relationship within our community. Obviously, you can tell Pia and I have been together for a long time. I had pictures all the way to elementary school, but in the scheme of things, today I had to find some pictures real quick, so they're more recently, but we've been building a relationship together since elementary school.
And I do want to highlight Patty dressed as an avocado right there, and me with a taco hat on. I had to. So we like to have a lot of fun. On average, our adult young learners and our team is making and preparing 350 meals daily that's enjoyed by our high school students.
At Sea Home.
Yeah, at Sea Home. They're actively involved in our local community, and we are empowering our adult learners with new life skills.
And this is just a quick little snippet of basic food preparation, of all our fresh fruits and vegetables, and again, washing dishes and sanitation, because sanitation is so important in the kitchen.
And then, this is just from our team members and some of their experiences they have with the program. They're able to watch learners complete high school and then continue on and work with us here at Sea Home. So that was Barb, one of our team members. Our kitchen manager Cindy said she loves working together. The students have brought a new energy in the kitchen. They have fun, and it's a happy environment, and that she likes that they're a part of their team as well now. And then Nikki, our other food service team member, was saying, as a Birmingham parent, she loves that we are now including former students within our kitchens.
And then our young adult learners, Ethan on the left, loves helping make the lunches. Brendan loves working where he went to school. And Wheaton loves making cookies. I will make sure he highlighted that part. He loves making, I will let everyone know, they are reduced sugar whole grain cookies. And working with our lunch staff ladies. Pia, what do you love to do? Do you want to tell us? No?
Do you want to whisper it to me? Pia's favorite part is cooking?
Yeah.
And some of our program goals, we want to teach social skills and job readiness to our young adult learners, but ultimately, we want to be able to hire our young adult learners as paid team members within our Chartwell's team.
And that's our new program that we just started in the last couple of months. Thank you.
Just thank you for coming to our meeting tonight.
So we wanted to share that because each thing that you have in appreciation of your service ties into the important work that you do and that you vision for our whole district. In addition to that, when you came in, I don't know if you saw the banner that passed by thanking you for your service. On your desk, in addition to the gift from Chartwell, there is a Birmingham Tumblr, a Birmingham pen that actually, if you pull out, oh gosh, my nails are too long, has the strategic plan in the middle of it, again, to kind of share in case you forget about our four pillars and our goals that you can share with interesting people about the work that you're doing. Yes? As well, this is just like the kids. As well, the thank you card that you have in front of you was created, we bought those cards from one of the micro businesses in the Adult Transition Program. So those were created by our students in the Adult Transition Program. As well, you will see a book in front of you. "The Circle Around Us" by Brad Montague beautifully illustrates the power of kindness and the ever-expanding circles of relationships that shape our lives. Inspired by this message, we see parallels within our community and circles. As Board of Education trustees, you have stepped up to serve and broaden your circles through volunteerism. Your dedication to fostering a supportive and inclusive educational environment is evident in your commitment to connecting with students, parents, and community members. To honor your efforts and extend the inspiring message of the circles all around us, we are proud to donate nine copies of the book to each of our elementary schools and BCS on your behalf. Each copy will be dedicated individually by one of our trustees, including Nicole McKinney, who just finished serving with us, with an additional copy donated in the honor of the entire Board of Education. This donation celebrates your commitment and helps spread the book's powerful message of kindness, a sense of belonging, and community throughout our district. There's a line in the book that says, "So let us create bigger circles all around us for the rest of our days. Let our caring ripple out in a million little ways." Thank you trustees for your commitment to Birmingham Public Schools and education of our students, and we have a video as well from our students.
Thank you Birmingham Board of Education.
Thank you for how I've been at our school.
Thank you for our dedication, our trustees, and all of you to support these high school students.
For every family we like to make, the Birmingham School Board for everything they do for our district. We especially love our school, Corbin.
Thank you.
Thank you Board of Education.
Thank you Birmingham School Board.
Thank you BCS Board of Education.
Go Eagles!
Hey, everyone, we want to give a big shout out to the Birmingham Board of Education.
For over 20 years, the Board of Education has been supporting BCS and their staffed students.
Making sure we have the tools, resources, and creative freedom for learning, growing, and changing lives.
Thank you so much to Birmingham Board of Education for supporting BCS.
Thank you Board of Education.
For making all the important decisions for our district.
To help our school, our teachers, and students.
Thank you Board of Education.
Thank you Board of Education.
For our freshman students, we want to thank the Birmingham School Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we thought we'd just take a few minutes and give a shout out to the Birmingham Board of Education. This would have been thank you. My guys wanted to say, thanks for the great opportunities, thanks for the great resources, and creative freedom. And of course, the great leadership you provide to this great district. We appreciate you. We just wanted to say, thanks.
Thank you Birmingham Board of Education for your hard work and dedication to our schools. We appreciate everything you do for our community and students.
Thank you for feeding our friends. The education for Birmingham. You know it's true, you're a family from goodness.
Thank you Board of Education.
That was beautiful. That was very, very lovely.
Very nice.
That really was. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chartwell's. Thank you so much. Happy New Year to you all. Thank you. At this time, Dr. Roberson, would you like to do your superintendent report?
Sure. For my report, as you know, we started our Superintendent Ambassador, Student Ambassador Program, and we have had the pleasure of having both Owen and Kennedy here as liaisons to that program here at the Board of Education meetings. To make sure that everybody gets a term, we will be transitioning a new set for our February meeting. But one of the things that Owen and Kennedy wanted to do is they wanted to present to the Board of Education regarding the Student Ambassador Program and where the work that they've done so far. So I'm going to invite Kennedy and Owen up to the podium, please.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and everyone attending this meeting. My name is Kennedy Cook.
And my name is Owen Reibshide. Today, we are here as the student representatives to the Board of Education to share with you the important work we've been doing to strengthen our school community. Our presentation has three key purposes. First, to explain the Superintendent Ambassador Program, which empowers students to contribute meaningfully to the district through leadership, advocacy, and collaboration. We'll highlight how this program fosters connections between students, staff, and district leaders to address real challenges and create positive change. Second, we'll provide a comprehensive analysis of the advisory program, a critical part of our school's effort to support students academically, socially, and emotionally. We'll celebrate its accomplishments while also addressing the struggles that both students and teachers have. Finally, we'll recommend actionable improvements to ensure advisory becomes a program that truly meets the needs of everyone involved. By the end of this presentation, we hope to leave with you a clear understanding of how the Superintendent Ambassador Program is amplifying student voice and how together we can continue to improve the student experience in our district.
Here's a brief overview of what we'll be covering in today's presentation. First, we'll discuss the ambassadors program, highlighting its purpose and accomplishments. Next, we'll explore the skills and benefits students go through and gain from this program. We'll then move on to the successes of advisory, followed by the challenges in advisory that students and teachers have both identified. After that, we will share teacher feedback on advisory. Then, we will present suggestions for improvement to address these challenges. Finally, we'll wrap it up with a thank you and answer any questions that you may have.
The Superintendent Ambassador Program is an incredible opportunity for students to take an active role in shaping the future of our schools. Here's an overview of the key responsibilities and contributions of the ambassadors. Serving on staff hiring committees, ambassadors help in hiring by providing student perspectives on hiring panels. This ensures that new staff align with the needs and values of the student body. I know last year I had the opportunity to be on the hiring committee for the Director of Special Education, which was a really cool opportunity to see how people get hired because I've never done that before, and then also to be able to contribute as how a student feels about that. And I'm involved in links, so I know what would be a good director for that as well. So we also collaborate on school improvement planning. Ambassadors work closely with district administrators to develop and refine strategies that enhance the educational experience for all students. This collaboration bridges the gap between leadership and the student community, representing student voices at Board of Education meetings. That's what Kennedy and I are doing right now. By participating in these meetings, ambassadors ensure that the perspectives, concerns, and ideas of the students and the entire student body are heard at the highest level of district decision-making. Advocating for change, ambassadors are not just participants, but changemakers. Whether advocating for increased security measures or other initiatives, they champion ideas that directly address student needs and improve the schools. This program empowers students to be leaders, collaborators, and advocates, creating a meaningful impact on our school and district.
The Superintendent Ambassador Program not only empowers students to make a difference, but it also equips them with viable skills and experiences. Let's explore the skills and benefits ambassadors go through in this role. Communication, ambassadors develop an ability to effectively articulate student concerns and perspectives, ensuring their voices are heard in a meaningful way. Leadership, collaborating with district leaders and peers, giving impactful initiatives, teaching ambassadors how to lead with purpose and confidence. Networking, ambassadors build strong relationships with administrators, teachers, and fellow student leaders, creating a viable network that extends and extends beyond student years. Real-world experience, by engaging directly with district leaders, ambassadors gain a deeper understanding of how policies are created and implemented. This experience provides insight into the complexities of the educational leadership. Opportunities, ambassadors have access to unique opportunities by volunteering and participating in things like staff hiring committee, the Red Apple Breakfast, the Leadership Institute, and the Veterans Day Brunch. These experiences broaden their perspective and deepen their engagement with district leaders. I was able to be a part of the Leadership Institute, and I was able to work with the other members in this program of the student ambassadors, and we gave really good insight from our perspectives as students with the district leaders. Through this program, we get the opportunities and skills not only to benefit our schools, but also prepare us for future leadership roles in our communities and beyond.
So now, I'm going to talk about some of the accomplishments of our program. So last month, we met with Ms. Imperial and the Director of the Counseling to share valuable student feedback. So our input helped identify ways to enhance the counseling experience and better support students' needs. Cookies and Conversations, to amplify student voices, ambassadors suggested that Dr. Roberson should create a time for students to talk with her, like how she talks with staff and members of the community. So we came up with the idea of Cookies and Conversations, a platform that encourages open dialogue and a meaningful feedback from students. Bowling and Safety, recognizing the importance of a safe and supportive environment, ambassadors addressed bowling and brainstorm strategies to help all students feel safe and comfortable among their peers. Security Enhancement, ambassadors met with the head of security to improve campus safety. This collaboration led to practical changes, including ID checks by security guards, a station guard at the main doors, and reducing the number of propped open doors to ensure all of our schools remain safe. For the math department, ambassadors collaborated with Ms. Imperial and raised concerns about the math curriculum and how different classes were learning different material. As a result, now all core math classes will create common finals. This initiative ensures consistency across classes, making sure all students receive the same foundational knowledge regardless of their teacher or school.
Let's start off by highlighting some key successes of advisory. First time for homework. Students shared that by having dedicated time during advisory to complete assignments has been a game changer. It allows them to balance their academic responsibilities with SAT and ACT preparation, extracurricular activities, and even part-time jobs. This structure helps eliminate some of the pressure they feel outside of school and makes their schedules more manageable. Next, the Sea Home Writing Center. This is a great resource for many students who struggle with writing. It works with having a selected upperclassman tutor, underclassmen who are struggling. Advisory also gives an opportunity for students to have additional learning about topics involving mental health, SAT preparation, proper screen time, and more. Finally, it provides students with additional support during advisory by leveraging their advisor's teacher's subject area. First, for example, by having an English teacher, you can get help with reading and writing, while having a history teacher, they can assist you with social studies. These successes discriminate that potential of advisory and align with students' needs. This provides a foundation that we can build upon as we address areas for improvement.
While advisory has shown potential and achieved notable successes, it's also important to address the challenges that have surfaced, as these provide opportunities for meaningful improvement. Purpose Confusion, many students don't understand the objective advisory and feel it lacks focus. Khan Academy Activities, students in ninth and 10th grade find the lessons repetitive and not helpful, saying they already know all the material. Many students also say they have not used Khan Academy at all in their advisory class. Limited Teacher Access, the inability to visit teachers during advisory is one of the biggest frustrations from students, especially when students need help before a test or on a big assignment. Age Inappropriate Lessons, 12th graders were asked to learn how to write an email, something they've mastered long ago. 12th graders expressed this should be taught earlier, and the lesson should be more dedicated to post-high school preparation. Personal Character Lessons, some students expressed that these character lessons are too intrusive and feel too personal for a school setting. Scheduling Confusions, students often don't know if advisory period will involve an assembly, a lesson, or if it is just homework time. Forced Friendships, some students expressed that they felt that the attempt to build a community through mandatory activities felt artificial.
To get a worldwide perspective on advisory programs, we've also gathered feedback from teachers who shared several important insights. A common suggestion from teachers is to make advisory study time. They believe that this adjustment can make the time more viable and productive for both students and teachers. Teachers in core-focused subjects raise concerns about allowing students to visit their classroom during advisory. They worry that they can be overwhelmed with many teachers seeking help at the same time, making it difficult to provide meaningful support. Many teachers have expressed that the building relationships with students is challenging. They describe the relationship as feeling forced or artificial, largely due to the limited time they spend with the students, just two classes per week, each lasting 38 minutes. This may be a possibility, this possibility may change since teachers will be spending the next four years with these students. Lastly, many teachers have shared that the current format of advisory is lacking purpose. They feel that they are primarily reading off slides, which doesn't really build or create meaningful engagement and connections. This insight highlights the need to redefine our advisory program, ensuring that it meets the needs of both students and educators while maintaining the intended purpose for building and creating communities.
To address these challenges and feedback shared by students and teachers, we've developed a set of suggestions aimed at making the advisory program more meaningful and effective. Meaningful Advisory Topics. We propose changing advisory on Tuesdays to occur just once a month, focusing on important discussions that are clearly communicated to the students in advance. Students would be aware of this date so that they do not save their homework to do during this advisory period. This adjustment ensures that the time is used for engaging purposeful topics that benefit everyone. Teacher Pass System. This would address the number-one concern from students. Implementing a pass system would allow students to visit other teachers during advisory with signed approval from both their advisory teacher and the visiting teacher. Attendance would be tracked to maintain accountability while giving students flexibility to seek the help they need. Teachers would be able to set a limit of how many students can visit. Testing Center Option. Providing a testing center during advisory would allow students to make up missed tests, creating a more efficient use of time for both students and teachers. This is a good opportunity for students who are unable to make up tests before or after school due to transportation. Peer Tutoring Support. We recommend establishing a supervised room where underclassmen and upperclassmen can be tutored by NHS members for academic assistance. This initiative fosters peer mentorship while supporting students in completing assignments or improving their understanding on challenging materials. These suggestions aim to maximize the value of advisory for both students and teachers by addressing key concerns and creating opportunities for meaningful engagement.
To wrap up, today's presentation highlights the meaningful impact of the Superintendent Ambassadors Program and the importance of continuing to strengthen our advisory program. Today, we can create a supportive, inclusive, and effective environment that empowers every student to succeed. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and feedback.
I gotta say something real quick. This presentation is proof that this program, this advisory superintendent program, is a success. You two just killed it.
Thank you.
That was amazing presentation.
Thank you.
From all of your descriptions, your definitions, to the suggestions, the research you did, I'm blown away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any questions for us? Yes.
I have a question. So you said that the biggest concern amongst students was teacher access? Was that a big concern amongst teachers, too? Do teachers, have they expressed a desire to want students to be able to come and see them?
So I know my advisory teacher was saying that it would be a helpful thing for her, but then when I also talked to teachers like math teachers, they were almost opposed to the idea without suggestions to help them. That's why I include the part where they may be overwhelmed, because if there's not a system, then many students are going to be going to those core focuses, because many students may not be going to the art teachers or the other elective teachers.
That's why we recommended the pass, because it has to be approved by both your advisory teacher and the teacher who you're trying to see, so that they actually approve it and a bunch of people don't just show up to their door.
It's kind of like an office hours.
Yeah. Yes.
What has been your biggest takeaway from all of this, in this experience? And both of you, I'd love to know from both of you.
Okay. My biggest takeaway, honestly, is I really had no idea how anything works. I mean, you just go to school. But if, I've been at Birmingham Public Schools for 13 years now, and I've gone to Greenfield, Pierce Derby, and See Home, and anytime I've seen an issue, I've always brought it up to the principal or my teacher, and I've always been involved. So like, for fifth grade, I was on the hiring committee to find a new teacher, and I just find that if you want change to happen, you have to do something about it. So when you see problems, you have to, you can't just hope it gets better, you actually have to do something. So the biggest thing that I've learned and gotten to do is, problems that I see, bring it to Dr. Roberson, or bring it to the board, or other school district officials to help improve the district.
I agree. Like, when we started advisory, I saw a lot of problems with it, so immediately before it even, behavioral became a topic with our group as each other, I was talking to the people in my advisory classes, I was talking to the people in my other classes to see what they thought, so I can bring it back to this group. And I love that I had this group, so I could take back the student voice and talk about it all together, so we can make this presentation, so things can be better for everyone.
Yes.
This might be a tough question, but now you're both seniors, correct?
Yes.
So as a senior and as being part of this experience, what would your senior person tell your freshman person? Basically, what would be some of the things you would advise an incoming freshman? Assuming it was you.
I would always say, always speak up and involve yourself, because those are opportunities for you to speak for others and yourself, because if you just keep things the way they are, it's not going to change unless you allow people or allow it to be known and heard. So that would be my advice, is to speak up and like, apply for these positions, apply for these programs, because not only does it help you speak up, but it gives you skills and it gives you able opportunities to make connections and relationships with people.
Mine would be get involved, because if I didn't do all the clubs and activities and classes that I've taken that I didn't want to, I would not be able to stand up in front of all the people in charge of Birmingham Schools and give this speech. So get involved with stuff.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
So, do your fellow students know that you have this role, and do they seek you out to give you feedback at times?
I don't think it's a big population. We have our Instagram page, so people who repost are like, they say, how did you get into this program? Like, how do you do this? And that's when we'll talk to them, but I don't think within our school, unless we visit the classrooms and ask questions about advisory or our school, they don't really know that we're in this position. So, I, yeah.
Personally, I've had multiple teachers reach out and email me to, so.
Teacher's over student.
Yes. So, I've gone around to get the information about advisory. I went around to pretty much every single class and talked to them. And so, I had students come find me in the hall, teachers who didn't get to say what they wanted to say, email me. So.
Okay.
I think now, from going to every class, pretty much everyone knows who I am.
I can't thank you enough. I think that the two of you have created such a strong foundation for this program, and I'm so excited to see it continue, but truly, you two are the trailblazers and took this initiative as our two seniors on our board, so thank you for your service.
Thank you guys so much.
I cannot wait to see what both of you will do next. So enjoy the rest of your senior year, and thank you again.
Thank you again.
I say, great job.
Thank you.
And I have to echo that. They did a wonderful job, but they are just, they are great students, and they represent 20, I think it's almost 25 other students. They are, as you can hear, they were articulate. They put this presentation together themselves. I mean, they're reading the board packet ahead of time. They are really taking this job seriously, and I can't thank them enough for being the first group to do this. I also want to give a shout-out to the other superintendent ambassadors, because we have a wide range of students on that advisory committee. Some who probably will not ever come up here at the podium, because they just have different personalities. And so, I say that to say that to be a part of a program like this, or many programs within our school district, you don't have to be the one who is always going to be at the forefront and speaking out and giving presentations, but your feedback is still important, is still valuable. We still want to hear from you. And I think that that's, you know, they are speaking on behalf, and I think Kennedy said it, like, you're speaking up for not only yourself, but for others. And so, they are speaking not only for themselves, but both Kennedy and Owen do a wonderful job of really seeking out input and voice from everyone. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. And that is my report for the evening. President, Rass, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any board comment at this time? I just want to thank Lori, Amy, and Nicole for serving as Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer over the past year. I appreciate serving with all of you and want to thank you for your service. And then, of course, my monthly plug for the Dog Show on February 2nd for the BYA, and then the BEF Bash is February 1st at the Daxton. Tickets are on sale still.
I do want to say, I'm so looking forward to working with you, Trustee Tajani. I'm very happy to have you on board with us, and I think it's going to be a learning experience, a wild ride, and welcome.
Anything else, trustees?
Just Happy New Year to everyone. Glad, this is a big year for many of us with our children graduating, so that's going to be fun.
We have five, Luke.
Yeah.
We have five trustees who have seniors.
A senior this year.
And of course, welcome, Mr. Tajani. Glad to have you, and we appreciate, obviously, Nicole McKinney.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have any public comment for this evening. So at this time, we're going to move into our annual organizational meeting, and this is typically a meeting that we have on an annual basis where we pass, not only do we have our officer elections for the incoming year, we also pass standard resolutions that we will have on an annual basis, just memberships to different associations, appointment of our legal counsel, designation of investing institutions, and we'll have a discussion about our board goals, and then we will all acknowledge our code of ethics by signing that. So, moving into our organizational meeting, I would like to turn the meeting over to Vice President Angeloni, who is also the nominating chair of our committee.
Thank you, President Rass. And as President Rass said, this is an annual process where we elect four officers on the board. The officers are president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. We usually start off by asking trustees for nominations for each one of the positions, and we have started with president. And I am happy to say, and proud to say, that President Rass, you have been nominated to be president again for another year, and I'm asking if you accept your nomination.
I do.
We have no other nominations for president, so I'm going to move this to a vote. If I can ask all trustees to vote to have President Rass serve a second year, which I actually think is the greatest idea ever, please raise your hand and say aye, and we'll count.
Aye.
Aye. Seeing that we are seven, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving right into vice, oh, sorry, we do.
That's okay.
We need a motion to accept President Rass as President Rass. I got a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next on the list, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have vice president, and we have two nominations. We have Luke Joseph, Trustee Joseph nominated for vice president, and we have trustee Nicole Spencer nominated for vice president. And I want to put on the floor and ask if we have any other nominations for vice president. Okay, seeing as none, then I would like to move forward with a vote. All those in favor of?
Are we gonna let them?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to speak, sorry. I totally forgot, my fault. So I would like to ask trustee Joseph and trustee Zammatt to speak a few words on why you would like to be.
Spencer.
Spencer, Vice President.
Would you like? Do you want me to go first?
Whatever you'd like.
Sitting closer to them.
Sure, no problem.
It's okay, Lawrence.
So first, I wanted to say thank you for the nomination of Vice President. I would be honored to serve in this position if my fellow trustees elect me. I'm qualified to step into this role on the board after participating in multiple committees, acting as board secretary, and completing numerous CBA courses and online seminars since my term began. My academic background in education, 20-plus years of working for public schools, as well as multiple volunteer experiences within our district and beyond, plus my commitment to our community, our strengths I will bring to the table. My goals as Vice President are concrete and achievable. I would like to support the board president and other trustees in any capacity necessary, engage in responsible governance with the entire board, superintendent, and district leaders, focus on excellence and success for all children, have responsible financial stewardship, communicate with purpose, and be respectful, transparent, and reflective. Thank you for your time. I would be honored to have your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Spencer. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to be nominated. It's really a privilege, first of all, to serve as a trustee, so bear with me here. I usually don't write notes, I usually speak from my heart, but I wrote one today. So I have been on the board for four years, and this is my fifth year. In these years, I have been very active, like, in various tasks. For example, I've been chaperoning multiple dances, whether they're in middle school or high school, going to orchestra trips, being a parent representative of the class of 2025, which one of my kids is one of those, and I'm still currently one of the parent reps. I have attended multiple MAB conferences, and I actually have signed up for six more courses in the upcoming conference, in the winter 2025 conference. I have participated in SOS walks, and I have been in various committees, like the bond or the finance or government relations, and more that I can't remember which one, to be honest, but I have introduced and adopted board goal regarding the ranking, which obviously was a very proud moment for all of us. And other various life experiences outside the board, yes, I do have a life outside the board. So for example, my job is I'm a CFO, so I'm kind of like Kevin in my job, where I present the board, I present the board report in front of the commissioners, because I work with a non-for-profit organization, so we have commissioners, and I present the board, I present the report on a monthly basis, I present a budget, and I present all the audited financials and all that. So that's my leadership skills. I also supervise 11 people from the various ethnic backgrounds and various ethnicities. And actually, the most I have supervised in my life was 50 at one point, and thank God, in my entire life, I've never had an issue and have always resolved issues, which I will discuss in a minute. I deal with, also with multiple vendors, which provides diversification. Besides my work, I serve in the church with various parts, like for example, soup kitchens, adopting families who are needing and purchasing various items for the whole year, obviously, especially around the holidays. I'm a prior member of the Lions Club, the Special Olympics, the Knights of Columbus, American Diabetes Association, various Chamber of Commerce's, and much more. I have constantly given back to the community and very passionate about it. I post positive motivational quotes on my LinkedIn page. You're more than welcome to visit to see what I post, but that's not an advertising for my LinkedIn page. And I always reach out to people who are struggling that I'm aware of, and I help them out throughout the process in one way or another. I truly and genuinely feel I make a difference, and I make huge accomplishments in reconciling people differences and helping people through illness struggle. I rarely speak about this, honestly. I rarely do. I really don't, because I'm really humble, and this is the way I've been raised, and this is the way I have been. But I feel very passionate about being Vice President, my qualification for the position. So, I am stating all these facts that I usually don't discuss. I have participated in every general meeting in special sessions, in closed sessions, in retreats, and et cetera. I have been here through some tough times, like face-to-face virtual issue through COVID or choosing a new superintendent, various union contracts that I supported, every single one of them. But let me tell you why I want to become Vice President. One of the things I want to do is I, and I hope that we don't really have this currently, but I want to do a buddy system where, for example, the senior would be a buddy with a junior, and the junior would be a buddy with a sophomore, and so forth, as the grades go down. This would strengthen the relationship between students, and especially the people who might not be into cliques or even the special needs children. Also, I would try to strengthen the Alumni Association and hopefully build relationships to establish, you know, hopefully, future speakerships or future career opportunities, or maybe even future donations. And this would build more of a community presence, which is important to me. I want to build a good network with our community, for example, with businesses who are located in Birmingham School District, or our government, our police, or fire. I would like to have, ultimately, would not be required, but it would be nice to have a representative from, for example, from the city of Birmingham here, attending our meeting, and vice versa, we would attend their meeting, just to kind of show support, a moral support with each other, because I feel that building a community network is helpful for us. And I want to be in front of people, in front of, as a district, not personally. In front of people like, for example, being in a festival and setting up a booth, and being present in front of people, and do things like walkathons to build community rapport. Because, let's face it, we have a lot of competition besides other school districts. We have a lot of strong private schools that people can choose from. So, if you use any product, like Pepsi or Coke or whatever, they keep advertising, they keep using their name, even the people know their name. So, by establishing that, by doing that, it would establish a stronger community and having constant presence to remind people that we are here for you. So, I also believe in fairness and equity and cooperation with one another. And this might be the only time that I can use being a male as a minority, but I don't know when was the last time a male had been a president or vice president. So, I would be one of the first ones in a while. And also, I was a naturalized American citizen, in case nobody knows that. So, obviously, that's another, you know, equity support that would show. I would also encourage diversification in assignments to committees, obviously, if people are interested. You know, just to have the same people serving in the same committees sometimes, you know, to have each other diversify, that would be helpful. And I'm a strong advocate for education throughout my whole life. For example, besides the fact I was raised by two highly educated parents, which my mom was a high school teacher, maybe not too many people know that. Myself and my wife and all my siblings are very highly educated. And also, another thing that people don't know about me is I used to teach in the university part-time for ten years, multiple subjects. And I also teach in the school, in the church, I mean, specifically, I also teach special needs students. The last thing I would do, or not the last thing, but the final point I would add is I would like to add the Pledge of Allegiance to our agenda, because a lot of our neighboring districts also have that. And I would like, I would be honored to serve side-by-side with Jen. I would love to support her a hundred percent, and the entire team, the MBIC, the CLT, and the teachers, and the staff, the students, and of course, our community. So, I humbly ask for your vote to become the next Vice President. And I'm asking for the chance to show you what I can do. So, I just ask for God blessings on all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Joseph. Thank you so much.
Take me while I have to write this.
Trustees, do we have any questions for either Trustee Spencer or Trustee Joseph? Okay, we are going to take it to a vote. So, we usually do this alphabetically, so we'll start with Trustee Joseph. All those in favor of Trustee Joseph being Vice President, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Vote shows two. All those in favor of Trustee Spencer as Vice President, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seeing as we have a majority, I'm going to ask for a resolution.
I, oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you want me to move it?
Yeah.
I move that we accept Nicole Spencer as Vice President for the 2025 year, 2025 year.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of moving this motion forward, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Now, we have the role of the Secretary. As a little twist of events, we did not have a nomination for Secretary. So, what I would like to do is ask if we have any nominations on the floor, if anyone would like to nominate him or herself as Secretary.
Actually, I'm just going to.
Oh, you're both.
It's Treasurer. But the next nomination is Treasurer.
Oh. Okay, now, I'll jump back and say it is Treasurer. And we did have a nomination for Trustee Hokumer. And Trustee Hokumer, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer on the floor?
I would like to nominate Luke Joseph as Treasurer as well.
Trustee Joseph, do you? I have to ask the. Trustee Joseph, do you accept that nomination for Treasurer?
I prefer not.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
So, then we have Trustee Hokumer, and no other nominations. So, I'd like to move that vote forward for Trustee Hokumer as Treasurer. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. And I need to ask for a motion to move that vote or nomination forward, right? Or did I just do that?
I think you did the motion.
I can't remember.
No, we didn't get a motion.
I didn't?
We went through the nominations, and we need a motion.
Okay.
I move to support Trustee Hokumer as Treasurer for the 25 calendar year.
Support.
Motion by President Ras, seconded by Trustee Spencer, sorry. All those in favor of moving this motion forward, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, we have that twist of events where we do not have a nomination for a Secretary. No, she actually wasn't.
Oh, she wasn't? Okay.
I think there was an error in what was sent out, so she, there was no one. Actually, I was, was I nominated for Secretary? And Amy Hokumer was nominated for Secretary, so we have no nominations.
We have no one who can serve, because.
I nominate Trustee Joseph to serve as Secretary.
I will accept that.
Do you accept nomination?
Sure.
Great. Okay. All those in favor of Trustee Joseph as Secretary, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to move this forward?
I move that we approve Trustee Luke Joseph to serve as Secretary for the 2025 year.
Second. So, it was moved by Trustee Hokumer, seconded by Trustee Ashlooney. All those in favor of moving Trustee Joseph forward as Secretary, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. And congratulations are in order. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you again for your service, Lori, and Tracy, for your service and serving as our nominating committee. I appreciate it very much. And congratulations to our new trustees. I look forward to another year of serving with each of you. Thank you. So, our next order of business is Resolution 43, Election of Officers for 2025, where I would serve as President, Nicole Spencer, Vice President, Luke Joseph as Secretary, and Amy Hokumer as Treasurer. Could I have a motion for Resolution 43, please?
I move to accept Resolution 43, Election of Officers for 2025.
Second.
Moved by Colleen, seconded by Lori. All those in favor of Resolution 43, Election of Officers for 2025, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Our next resolution is Resolution 44, Board Representation Assignments. And I'm trying to find this in my packet here. Thank you. Oh, thank you. So, right now, for Resolution 44, we also may have, so Trustee McKinney will be coming off of the Athletic Advisory Board, as well as, I think that was the only one she was serving on.
Diversity.
The African-American.
She was not on that, so you.
She's on diversity.
She's on diversity, so she'll be taken off of that one. But Luke, you and Lori are, so I'll just run through them very quickly. B A A F N, so the Birmingham African-American Family Network is Lori and Luke. Athletic Advisory currently is Colleen. Nicole will be leaving that position. BPS Diversity and Character Ed is Lori. Nicole's also leaving that. The BEF is me, so Birmingham Education Foundation. The Birmingham Student Scholarship Fund Association is Amy Hokumer. Birmingham Youth Assistance is me. International Academy Liaison is Colleen. OCSBA Government Relations Committee is Luke with a backup of Amy. PTA Council is current Board President, which is myself. Friends Liaison is Nicole Spencer. Curriculum Committee, Nicole and Colleen. And then our standard Bylaws and Policy Bond Finance nominating and Agenda Planning, those are all staying the same, except Lori will roll off of Agenda Planning, and Nicole will join. So, at this time, we need to, do we want to add Jason? And then, is that something that we should do now before voting?
I think we should ask.
I think so.
I would like to be removed from the Finance Committee, please, and put me on some other committee.
Okay. So, let me, let's first get Jason in, and then I'll take you off of Finance, and then we'll.
Thank you.
Of course. So, Jason, are there any committees that you would like to serve on?
Do you have the list in front of you?
I looked at it already.
Okay.
But the Athletic Advisory Board would be great. And there's also Bylaws. I think that would be really interesting.
And Lori, we could add another person to our Bylaws Committee, because it's only you and me since we lost Adrian.
Okay.
And he's an attorney.
Okay.
I thought we were going to keep that to two people.
Oh, we are?
Well, we were. We were going to keep it to two, but.
Okay.
Do you both want to still continue to serve?
I do.
I'll step off it. I don't care.
Okay, then I'm going to take you off, Amy, and add Jason. Let's just go right down the line. Colleen, are you happy to serve in everything else, or is there any interest in any other committees?
No, I still do have a Bylaw and Policy Committee, but I will hold off another year.
Okay. Thank you. So, Jason, we've got you. Amy, you're going to go off of Bylaws and put Jason on. Is there anything else that you want to change?
No. However, Nicole is next back on the table.
Yes, and I was going to mention that it's not, that I didn't hear it mentioned there.
Yeah, we took it off.
We took it off.
We took it off when we were in Lombard.
All right, so I'm adding it back on.
We thought it was.
Yes. So, I'm adding next back on. So, you're fine with your committees. I'm fine with mine. Are you fine with yours?
Perfect.
Okay. Are you fine with yours? Luke, you want to be taken off of Finance, but there was one that you and I talked about that.
I would like to, not necessarily, because I think it's only one member, but I would like to be on the Friends, and then also.
It doesn't have to be one member.
Yeah, but I would like to get the links to attending that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what other committee there is availability, but if.
You want to take a look real quick?
If the Bond has a vacancy, what committee has a vacancy right now?
Finance, but I'm happy to step off of Bond if you wanted to go ahead and join the Bond Committee.
I mean, if that's okay with you, I can.
It's my baby, so take care of it, because I feel very passionate about the bonds. But I think that I'm happy to open up a space if you'd like to serve.
Okay. That sounds fair.
I do feel, though, that we need to add somebody else to Finance.
Agreed.
So, currently, it's Trustee Zammatt and Trustee Hokumer.
Correct.
Without Luke, it would just be the two of us.
A suggestion, not to put you on the spot, but a suggestion from our Finance person. He thinks, his suggestion was that anytime a new person comes on, they should go on the Finance Committee so they can have a very good understanding of the finances of the district. So, I hate to put you on the spot.
No, I just wasn't sure if I should even ask for that one, so that's fine.
That was a suggestion that.
Attorneys aren't very great with the whole Finance thing. We just bill hours, so.
Okay, so, just.
That makes you great, I find.
Making sure.
Six-minute increments.
Athletic Advisory Committee, we're going to add Jason. We're going to add Luke to Friends. We've added next back on with Nicole. Bylaws and Policy, Jason. Bond Committee, I will roll off, or Amy will roll off a Bylaws, and Jason will join with Lori. Bond Committee will be Lori, Luke, and Colleen. And then Finance will be Jason, Amy, and Colleen.
Wow, we did it.
Sorry for asking this dumb question, but how do we get notifications, especially with the ones I'm new on? Like the B A, what is it?
The Friends?
Yeah.
Not the Friends, but the other one that Nicole.
B A A F N?
Yeah. How do I get that information?
They have not been meeting, but we'll make sure that.
And you're already on that committee, so you should.
I just want to know how I can get.
Emails. They send out emails. The president of B A A F N.
Yeah, they haven't met recently, but.
So, you guys will let them know to email me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I just want to make sure.
I'll make sure that the president adds you, your email.
All right. I just want to make sure that I have them there.
I'll make sure.
Jen?
Yes.
Does, maybe I should ask Lori this. Does the Diversity and Character Ed Committee meet still?
Well, we do. Go ahead, Dr. Imperial. But we plan on it, revising it and.
I mean, I would be willing to be the backup on that, because I was Character Ed when they were two separate.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to add you.
Okay.
And just because, I think it's just important to reiterate, just because there's the Board Representative on each of these committees, doesn't mean that any trustee can't attend a BEF meeting or a BYA meeting. It's just, these are the liaisons. And if you can't make it to your meeting, please don't hesitate to reach out to the other rep or somebody else on the board. But we will go ahead and update this. If I could have a motion then to amend Resolution 104.
Forty-four.
Sorry. I'm reading.
I know.
Sorry, the old one. So, if I could have a motion for Resolution 44 to update the 2025 Board Rep Presentation Assignments.
I'm.
What did you think?
Correct. That's a good call out. So, the nominating committee will now be Nicole Spencer and Tracy Jones. Agenda Planning will now be Jen Ras and Nicole Spencer. Yes. So, could I have a motion? So could I have a motion for resolution forty-four, the new board assignments?
I move that we approve resolution forty-four, Board Representation Assignments with the changes noted now for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
Support. Moved by Amy, supported by Lori. Any questions, trustees? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Motion number forty-five. This, yes, thank you. This is the designation of our investing institutions. This is something we do on an annual basis. Could I have a motion or is there any discussion about our investing institutions?
Just a note to the public that this is very standard. As President Rass mentioned earlier in our adopting for the new year. And all of the next resolutions are the same. They're just standard procedure.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for resolution forty-five, the designation of investing institutions?
I move to support resolution forty-five, designation of investing institutions.
Second.
Moved by Nicole, was that you, Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Amy. All those in favor of resolution forty-five?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to resolution forty-six, which would be the annual authorization for electronic transactions. I don't know if there's any questions. If there is not, may I have a motion for resolution forty-six?
I move to move resolution forty-six forward. It is the annual authorization for electronic transitions.
Support.
Moved by Lori, supported by Colleen. All those in favor of resolution forty-six, our annual authorization for electronic transactions, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. We're moving right along. Resolution forty-seven, appointment of our legal counsel. Any questions, trustees?
No.
If not, if I could have a motion to move this forward?
I move that we consider resolution forty-seven, appointment of legal counsel.
Support.
Moved by Amy, supported by Colleen. All those in favor of resolution forty-seven, our appointment of legal counsel, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution forty-eight, the membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards. Again, standard, annual basis.
I move that we consider resolution forty-eight, membership in M A S B, Michigan Association of School Boards.
Support.
Moved by trustee Hokumer, supported by trustee Joseph. All those in favor of members, our membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero. Resolution forty-nine, our membership in the National School Board Association.
I move to consider resolution forty-nine, membership in the National School Boards Association.
Support.
Moved by trustee Spencer, supported by trustee Hokumer. All those in favor of resolution forty-nine, our membership in the National School Board Association?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution fifty, our membership in the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies.
I move that we approve resolution fifty, membership in Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies.
Support.
Moved by trustee Hokumer, supported by trustee Spencer. All those in favor of resolution fifty, our membership in the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution fifty-one, designation of person for posting notices of meetings. Tracy, thank you for doing this for us. May I have a motion of resolution fifty-one, the designation of a person posting our notices of our meetings?
I move to approve resolution fifty-one, designation of a person for posting notices of meetings.
Support.
Moved by trustee Zammit, supported by trustee Joseph. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution fifty-two, our public participation at Board of Education meetings reaffirmation.
I move to approve resolution fifty-two, our public participation at Board of Education meetings reaffirmation.
Support.
Moved by trustee Eshlooney, supported by trustee Spencer. All those in favor of resolution fifty-two, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now we will come to our discussion on our assessment of board goals for this year. And I know we talked a little bit about it at our last meeting. I know that Amy sent something forward too about the Finance Committee. I think this is just really talking about where we're at with our board goals. And then we will vote on the twenty-first for our 2025 goals. That way it gives Jason an opportunity to become familiar with our goals. And I know that we had a couple of things that we wanted to change the language on a few of our goals.
The Finance Committee at our last meeting did rewrite our responsible stewardship goal. So if everyone's okay, do you want me to read it?
Sure, if you want to go ahead.
Oh, or do you want to talk about our progress?
Let's talk about our progress and then if you could just, if you wouldn't mind reading it. No, I should have teed that up first. So our first goal, I don't know trustees if you have it in front of us, was our strategic plan goal on how we will commit to continually reviewing, utilizing, and referring to the district's strategic plan and how it's reflected in the work of our board. I'm not going to read the entire goal, but just want to put that out for conversation. And again, I know we talked about it at our last meeting, but just reflect on how we as a board believe that we accomplished goal number one.
Well, I think everyone who's sat through our meetings knows that every resolution is connected to a board goal. So that as both trustees and staff, as well as the public, understands why we're approving it. And I think Dr. Roberson has provided us with quarterly, if not more frequent, updates regarding our strategic plan. And I truly believe we have used it as our roadmap when it comes to committee work and approval of curriculum.
And I think it's important to note that every resolution outside of our organizational meeting is tied to one of our strategic plan goals. So they're part of our strategic plan. Trustees, anything else on goal number one regarding assessment? I would agree with trustee Hokumer. Student achievement, as a board, we commit to evaluating all students' standings and progress using several assessment tools, including iReady, Amstep, PSAT, SAT, and data from our CLIMEN survey. I think that just with April's feedback and data that she shared, obviously, we've accomplished a lot with our testing and with our students. So I think that we've done very well in the amount of study sessions that we have utilized regarding, reviewing the data. Anyone else have anything to add?
Oh, I agree. I, I think making data-driven decisions begins and ends for us with being able to have access to that data. And thank you, Ms. Imperial, for providing that to us.
Yes. I also think we've accomplished this goal as a board. Responsible stewardship, I will go ahead and turn it over to Amy because I know that she and the Finance Committee have worked with Mr. Taratuda regarding revising this goal.
Okay, so our responsible stewardship goal involves working with our CFOO to approve our budget, to look for revenue enhancement opportunities, programming, and to work towards our goal of a balanced budget by 2027 as represented in our strategic plan. The goal's a little lengthy, so we did talk about how to shorten it. But I believe that as a committee, we talked a lot about balanced budget, about what that looks like in terms of, you know, net zero versus one percent or less. And I do believe that we are, as a board, making decisions that are helping us to get towards our balanced budget goals. So I don't think, this isn't a check the box and you're done sort of thing. We are still working on it, as we will be. But I, I feel like we certainly spent a lot of time making this a closer reality. Does anyone else from the Finance Committee want to say anything?
No, I, I think you hit the high points.
Yeah.
Work in progress always.
Mm-hmm. Should, I, I do think that for next year, I would like the goal to read. As a board, we will work with the CFOO to approve budgets that address the district's financial needs with an ultimate goal of a balanced budget by 2027. We will also work with the CFOO and central administration to review opportunities for increasing revenues, increasing enrollment, and decreasing expenses. The board will continue to review monthly financial statements and staffing models at least annually. All financial goals will align with the goals of the strategic plan.
Just for the record, even though it sounds long, it's shorter than the one before.
I know.
Thank you all for spending time rewriting that and.
There was much longer before.
Yes, no, I appreciate the rewrite and I, I think that we've accomplished a lot and we continue to work towards being fiscally responsible. So thank you. Anybody have anything else regarding responsible stewardship? Okay. Board development, I know that in our last meeting, we had some back and forth about this. But as a board, we commit to attending board training individually and collectively. I do think that we accomplished a lot in this area, but I look forward to this year where we have our retreats on the calendar and we'll continue to work together. I know that some trustees have already signed up for the Leadership Institute. So that is something that we have open for anyone that wants to go ahead and take those classes. So I think that, that's something that we felt strongly about keeping for next year as well. Anybody have anything to add about board development? Okay. Safety and security, as a board, we commit to reviewing district safety protocols twice per year. I know that we've also done a lot in this area with some closed sessions about safety and security as well as updates. So I don't know if anyone else has anything to add regarding goal number five, safety and security?
I think we've accomplished that goal.
I agree. Thank you.
And it's, but it's ongoing.
Correct.
It's an ongoing goal.
Right.
To just to point out.
Right. And then number six, I think that this is something that we've accomplished, but again, continue to be a work in progress. And we did just vote on this goal back in, amended with goal number six with our district rankings that we commit to reviewing the district third-party rankings on an annual basis. So I know we were talked a little bit about trying to weave that one into goal number three. So I will work with trustee Joseph on that as he brought that goal forward to see if we can weave it in to make sure that it makes sense for our next meeting. So.
Goal number three or two?
Sorry, two.
Okay, thank you.
Just the data-driven decisions. So trustees, just a reminder that while I think we've accomplished a lot of our goals, we talked about we'll be moving these goals forward again for 2025. Just revising some of the language and see if we can get to a place with goal number six tying into goal number two. And if not, then we'll see if it just stays the same. So we will vote on that at our June, or I'm sorry, January twenty-first meeting. Okay, and then next on our agenda is the Code of Ethics, Annual Acknowledgement and Signing. And that is, everybody has a copy of that in their packet. So it's just a reminder that we acknowledge our Code of Ethics every year. I won't go through the whole thing, but as a board member, I will promote the best interests of the school district as a whole and would adhere to the following ethical standards and principles. Again, I won't read them all, but I, please go ahead and read those. These are also in our board operating procedures as well as our.
Port policy.
Port policy, right. So if you could just go ahead and write your name, signature, and date. And we will collect those and give those to Tracy.
Will collect them, I'm sorry?
Tracy will. You know what, I'll collect them. I'll collect them. I'll take them.
Thank you. And with that, that kind of ends our organizational meeting, so thank you all. We will move in to our consent agenda where we have our personnel report, our financial statements, and our minutes from our regular board meeting of December seventeenth. If I could have a motion to approve resolution fifty-three, acceptance of our consent agenda?
I move to accept resolution fifty-three, acceptance of the consent agenda.
All right, second that motion.
Moved by trustee Zammit, seconded by trustee Joseph. All those in favor of accepting resolution fifty-three, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now we have, I will turn it over to Business Services where we have two resolutions. I will turn it over to Mr. Taratuda for our stormwater management and then contracts for the maintenance building salt storage.
Okay. I'm on, great. So resolution fifty-four, in front of the board, is stormwater management for the operations and maintenance building. At Sea Home. I'm sorry. Stormwater management operations agreement at Sea Home. So as you know, we are tearing up the parking lot over by the athletic fields and completely replacing it as we have done with Groves and Bingham Farms. There are new requirements by the city and by the county for how we manage our stormwater. So we enter into the stormwater management agreements with our local municipality that the school is located in. In this case, it is the city of Birmingham. And they have their ordinances which comply with the countywide stormwater management ordinances. So we've done this before. I'm being a little bit longer in respect to trustee Tajani, who has not been here and been through some of these before. But we have approved two of these over the past year. So this is a bit of a formality at this point for the board. But we did discuss this just an hour or two ago in the Bond Oversight Committee in greater detail.
Trustees, are there any questions regarding resolution fifty-four, the stormwater management operations and maintenance agreement at Sea Home? Could I have a motion to move resolution fifty-four through?
Move resolution fifty-four to move forward for the stormwater management operations and maintenance agreement at Sea Home High School.
Thank you. Resolution fifty-four moved by trustee Joseph. Could I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Zammit. Trustees, all those in favor of resolution fifty-four, the stormwater management operations and maintenance agreement at Sea Home, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution fifty-five, next is the award for contracts for the maintenance building, salt storage shed, and fire alarm system. So over at our facilities, as you noticed, it is the winter month and we have a salt storage shed that has been in place over at facilities for a number of years, but is basically at the end of its life and falling apart as we showed images to the Bond Oversight Committee. So that needs to be replaced. And we went out to bid as we are required to under bond regulations. We received twenty-one total bids for the project, so we got a good coverage and spread of costs for the construction, concrete, asphalt, and actual building of the storage shed as well as the fire alarm system upgrades at the facilities building. So good coverage all around. The total cost of the project is. The total cost of the project is coming in at $503,874, which if you look through your board packets, is actually over budget from what had been projected at that time, mostly due to the fact that the allocation of funds for this project had been set really back in 2020. And so this is both the cost of some minor change in scope due to easement requirements with the city as well as inflation. So while we are a little bit over budget on this particular project, we do manage the whole, the project as a whole and any of these overages. And this is probably one of the first ones that has come to the board that's actually been over budget. So we were in a really great financial position at this time. And this overage will not impact any future bond work that, at this time.
Trustees, any questions for Kevin regarding the maintenance of the salt storage and fire alarm system upgrades?
Okay, I'm sorry if this is a dumb question. The fire alarm is only for that maintenance building or the fire alarm system across?
Just for that building.
Okay, got that, thank you.
You know, I just wanted to say that this is one of those projects where you're looking at just like the nuts and bolts. This one is not like an attractive project. It's not something that you think are going to really, you know, wow the community and, and impact the kids in such a positive way. But it's a must, I mean, it's something we have to do. And even though it, it went over budget, as Kevin mentioned, we have not been over budget on any other. And so I think the Bond Committee of Trustee Rass and Trustee Zammatt and I just said, okay, fine. You know, that's what we got to do.
It was a pretty compelling argument, so wise, yeah.
Could I have a motion for Resolution 55?
I move that we approve Resolution 55, Contracts for Maintenance Building Salt Storage and Fire Alarm System Upgrades.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Hokumer, supported by Trustee Spencer. All those in favor of approving Resolution 55, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Trustees, is there anything else for this evening? If not, meeting adjourned at 8:27.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, thank you.